Good evening. Good evening. Today is Thursday, November 9th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience this evening. It's great to see such a full house, and welcome to anyone who may be watching from home online. Director Marsal, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by, I think I heard Director Connor first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First, we'll receive a report about Edward Neal Elementary and Hidden Valley Elementary from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Christine Black, Principal, and Mr. Lyle Baumstah, Principal. Parents, social workers, and behavioral specialists will be joining as well. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Happy to be here this evening for our first installment of this year's School Reports. I believe last year, we started with our older learners. We started with our secondary students. This year, we'll start with our elementary schools. So we have two fantastic leaders and representing fantastic schools with you tonight. Edward Neal Elementary, Hidden Valley Elementary. Also, I hope you might recall that some of the intent behind these reports is really to help the board and the public know how we're really trying to live out our core values, our strategic roadmap, and how the board and the community can expect to see that energy, innovation, and effort showing up in our dashboard results. So without further ado, I introduce Principal Lyle Baumstah and Christine Black.
Good evening.
We'll be doing some musical chairs.
Well, we'll get started, and then we'll just introduce ourselves as we get going. I'm Lyle Baumstah, the principal at Neal. And for all the content tonight, you're going to see some connections to the profile of a learner, and also a big driver for a lot of our work with our school improvement plans this year is the MTSS framework. And then there's certain elements within that framework. So you're going to see examples of how we're applying the profile and also the framework into some of the work that we're doing, and we're going to celebrate that with you tonight. And so Sarah, you're going to go first.
Hi, I'm Sarah Parker. I'm the school social worker at Edward Neal Elementary School. What I, when I start talking about this, you know, I don't want to take away from Hidden Valley's time. So if I don't get to everything, please reach out with any questions that you may have. So projects that we're doing with our school to start is we have a student spotlight. So what our student spotlight is, is every child in the whole building is going to be shown on a board that is right by our office. Something about this that I love is it's going to be every student. And you don't get that a lot. Sometimes it's student of the week, or our PBIS student of the week, or things like that. Whereas this, it's going to be every single student is represented on our board. And you can only imagine, you know, when they see their picture on the board and how they smile and just being represented in a school for them to feel like a Neal All-Star and that they're a part of that community. Another project we have, project we have right now is our identity project. We do, last year, we had two. This year, the plan is to have three. Same concept. It's a board that is some type of activity where every student gets to have, what we did this year was a star, so it made a huge star. And it says 300, and I think we're at 67 students. It had 72 staff, and one community was on it. So it's showing that, again, everyone is represented in their own way and who they are. Teaching, you know, who you are at a young age is important so that it starts out at elementary of where do you come from, and who is your family, and what do you represent? And again, seeing them walk by and finding their star and where it's hidden is great. So we'll have another one at the end of December, early January, and then again in March. We have a new student process we started this year. So anytime there is a new student, we have, it's, you know, I think eight or nine steps. And what it is, is it's basically that idea that when new students come to a school, it's scary and it's nerve-wracking. And they didn't start at the beginning, and sometimes they're coming from different schools in our district. But, you know, we had a new student yesterday from South Carolina. So they get a buddy, and they get a tour, and, you know, especially for our newcomers. That's a big population that we see in our district. And so finding a Neal neighbor that, you know, is welcoming them in their home language is super important for them to say, wow, you know, I have a friend here already that is speaking the language that I speak, which is very important. And that's just something that is new, and I think so far, it's been great. Then we go into our staff. So we have what is called a staff spotlight video. So I sit down every week on Fridays. It's two staff members, and we just do a fun little video. And it's questions of, you know, it can range from a personal of what do you like to do when you just have your free time, your self-care, to what do you like about fifth grade? And then it always ends with what do you love about Neal? And why do you like to be here? And what, why here? And so far, just the feedback of, you know, this really made my day on a Friday and seeing your voice heard, because to take care of our students, we have to take care of our staff. So if we are able to show our staff that they're important and they're wanted and, you know, their voice matters and really seeing them taken care of, then our students are going to get taken care of as well. And then finally, we just do a board in the, in our lounge right now. And every single day, I erase it and put on a new question. And something that was on the video is, you know, after a hard week at Neal, what was, who was someone that helped you? And the whole board was filled and seeing everyone's name. And again, just having staff feel welcomed and important from all lenses, not just the teachers, but our custodian staff, our lunch staff, our admin, you know, our EAs, right, a huge part of our building. So everyone getting represented and goes from our adults to our students. Thank you.
Another portion that's really connected to mainly the MTSS portion, and that's the collaborative linked teams. And so sometimes in Burnsville, we like to, like all educational institutions, we like our abbreviations. So our CTs, our collaborative teams do a lot of our heavy lifting with our work. And so for Neal, last year, I mentioned Math Talk, and you had a few videos of two teachers that were piloting the new math curriculum. So this year, obviously, we're implementing that curriculum, and all the teachers are exploring, how do you do this Math Talk thing? And how do you make sure that all kids' voices are involved? And it's, there's some challenges there. We're running into some speed bumps, and how do you achieve that as we work through that? And we're investing a lot of time and energy into that process and trying to improve teachers' capacity to take this concept of Math Talk and getting kids to discuss concepts and ideas and share their thinking and make that part of the norm and not like a special activity. One of the things that we're doing with that to kind of cement that is to, we have a partnership with the Minnesota Regional Center for Excellence. It's an arm of MDE. And so they've been a great resource for us. They were in our building today, and they did math walks. And that means that they visited classrooms, and they went to every single classroom and collected data on how we're doing. And that came from a process that we co-developed and co-created with our teachers last spring. And so it wasn't like something that the staff didn't know was coming. They knew it was coming because we built the system, and we built how we were going to do that last April and May. And then we're living it this year. And so we're going to discuss it at the BLT meeting tomorrow and see the results, and then determine next steps for a staff meeting next week. And so that's a big part of our work this year is our collaborative linked teams, and our focus is all around, a lot of it is around that Math Talk piece, which is getting kids talking. But then the kind of hidden piece with that is to make sure that, how does a teacher gather data from students and what they're hearing, and then make instructional changes? And that's a lot of, I was used to when I was, started teaching, you know, 20, 30 years ago, you would get data from the quiz you would give. And now, nowadays, we're getting quiz, we're getting quiz information from students on what they're responding and what they're saying and what they're doing. And we're not waiting for that paper and pencil quiz. We're trying to react in the moment and adjust our teaching. And so that's a huge paradigm shift for our system, but it's the work that we need to do, and our BLT and our system believes in it. And so that's our biggest probably core focus with our system plan this year. That's our heavy lifting, and that mostly lives with our collaborative teams.
My name is Gabriella. I have a kindergartner and a fifth grader at Neal Elementary.
And you are the amazing?
I am the PTA president. I was voluntold.
Off on how it works, I think.
We actually live in Lakeville, and we switched over to 191 during the pandemic. We really appreciated the health precautions that were being taken in this district. So we initially meant to be temporary, but we found our home at Neal, and there's no going back. It is a gem of a school, and I really say that with all my heart. I was the vice president at our old school, and it was great, but I didn't realize how greener it was on the other side. So we are here, and we're here to stay for a while. So part of the reason that we love Neal is because of the sense of community that Neal tries to build. And that's what made me want to participate in the PTA and kind of further develop that. So some of the things we do as a PTA involve fundraising, but our fundraising really aims to just break even, and we try to create unforgettable experiences for our students that they might not otherwise get outside of school. So one of our biggest fundraisers is the Fund Run itself. And in prior years, we just kind of ran in a circle, but this year, we really tried to put the fun in Fund Run, and we added lots of activities along the track. And then as the finish line was a giant obstacle course inflatable, and that just encouraged kids to keep going. We also try to maintain things equitable, so there are some students who are not able to physically participate. So we, this year, added a cheering table where kids could color posters of encouragement, and teachers as well as parents got in on it. And we also encourage adults to run with their kids. So I raced my kid, and I did win, and I will hold that over him until he's old enough. He'll someday beat me. But some of our other things is Neal has a unique diversity. I think it's amazing that we have so many cultures, languages, and backgrounds. So in order to celebrate that, we implemented last year our Taste of Neal Potluck. So this was our second annual one, and we hope to keep doing it. But it did come from a selfish place to try everyone's different foods from everyone's different backgrounds, but it also was such a celebration of diversity. And to see so many people come in, we were expecting 40. Or last year, I think we had an RCP of 42-ish, and nearly 200 showed up with food. So we had plentiful. So this year, we didn't even bother with an RCP. We had an amazing turnout, and I think that's probably one of my favorites just because it's so beautiful to see. We also have, let's see, Skate Bill Night. It's a very economic way for families to get out and just do something fun. We don't even raise money at that. We also don't raise money at the potluck. But we have, let's see. Sorry, I initially was told I had seven minutes, so I'm cutting this down for you. Oh, we have our Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's a really big reach out to the community. The local QuickTrip, as well as Chick-fil-A and Hy-Vee have all been super supportive and helpful. They give donations for like breakfast. We also get gift cards so we can buy the things we can't get donations from. But we like to really appreciate our staff because, as Sarah said, if our staff is happy, our students are happy. And I like to tell them, you are helping raise my children. And so whatever I can do to make your day a little bit easier, we'll do it. And of course, if we ever have a sudden situation where our teachers need a little extra support and love, we have an amazing group of volunteers that are at the ready to be there. So our PTA is not big. It's very small, but we do try to do as big of an impact all year round as we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Do the dance.
Good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair Hume, board members. My name is Christine Black. I'm the principal at Hidden Valley, and I am so proud to be here tonight to talk about our school. Sometimes coming to the board can feel a little bit anxiety-producing, but I just feel proud to talk about our school and our community. So we are starting with these pictures, and this is one of thousands of pictures that we have of our students and our community. We work really hard to be as inclusive and as proactive with our community as possible. This year, we are at a high for the time that I've been at Hidden Valley with 481 students at Hidden Valley. Tonight, I have three members of our community with us, and so I'm going to have them introduce themselves.
My name's Jamie Fofana, and I have a fourth grader and a first grader at Hidden Valley.
And my name's Kim Hayman. I'm the school social worker at Hidden Valley.
And my name is Amal Osman, and I'm the behavior specialist at Hidden Valley.
And so we're going to go to our next slide. And if you look at the graphic that is on this slide, you'll notice that it says developing trusting and safe relationships that continue to grow. And at Hidden Valley, we really look at that as multidirectional. We want to make sure that we are developing strong, deep, trusting relationships with our students. We want them to feel safe and cared about, valued and significant. We need to develop strong relationships with our staff so that they are safe to take risks in their teaching and to grow and develop in their teaching as well. We develop relationships with our families. If we leave that part out, we're missing a huge hole in our school. And so we are trying as hard as we can to intentionally develop that relationship with our families. And so I have Amal and Kim, who are going to share a little bit about that and how we are developing our school climate and voice.
So I'm Kim Hayman, and one support that we offer at Hidden Valley is socially emotional groups for students. And it's something that's available to all students based on teacher referral, student referral sometimes, family referral. So it's just an opportunity for students based on their needs and what's going on to learn more skills, to help solve problems, belong in part of a group, and just feel empowered to be part of this group that works on these things that are important to them. And so as a staff member, it gives me a lot of opportunity to listen to students and hear what they are seeing as concerns and problems in their own life and just provide some other ways or opportunities for them to grow their skills in solving those problems. And in elementary school, it can be as easy as someone standing in my spot in line to really big problems going on at home. So it's just really exciting to see students kind of take ownership of ways that they are in control as just little kids in our school through the social groups.
In my role as a behavior specialist, I'm available for the students from the time I start working until the time I send them home to their loved one. From starting to greet them at the car loop, to welcome them with a smile and wishing them a great day, to working through those meltdowns that happens without knowing, why did it happen? Does that going to affect our day? How can we work through the problems that we're solving right now? Can we solve it? Is it a big deal now, a big deal, which brings a joy to me? Knowing all those ethnic backgrounds that we have, I relate to some of them. By language barriers, I relate to the Somali community more. I relate to the Spanish population. So it's like just having that moment to listen and be available and accessible for them. My walkie-talkie is always on. I'm the first one to respond to any behaviors, but I love responding to them because with every behavior, I'm able to get to know a student, get to know what's bothering them, and how can we solve it? And just through that, I'm envisioning that some of the groups that we will be working on that I want to focus on is the Infinity Groups at elementary level. Loving who you are, loving other people, so we could all merge together as a beautiful tapestry is my image. So those calls that I'm receiving in a daily basis is just giving me that extent of like, okay, this is what I need to work on, and this is where my student needs to be empowered and led and shown.
These two are part of what we call our SOAR team at our school. We're the Hidden Valley Hawks. And part of the SOAR team, their mission is to give children the words that they need to be able to share with us what we need to know to support them better. Our next slide talks about collaboratively linked teams, and this is a huge piece in moving our school forward with school improvement. We have, I just came from a BLT meeting. Lyle talked about having one tomorrow. We have ours on Thursday evenings. And so our BLT team has created a structure so that when we have leadership teams throughout the school, such as PBIS, such as our SOAR team, data teams, those teams come, and we have a feedback loop with our building leadership team so that we are able to keep a pulse on what is going on in the school, where are things bubbling up that might need to be addressed, where are the things that we need to celebrate with our community? And so we've developed this collaborative loop that happens with all of the teams within our school. We have collaborative teams that meet weekly to work on data and data-driven decisions. So we want to make sure that we are clear on where our students are starting, what's next for them, what are the metrics that we're using, and what are the things that are going to help them move and exceed typical growth so that we're able to close the achievement gap? We also have done some things very intentionally. In a large school with a large staff, we have many different teams that are all competing for time with students. And so rather than having them compete, we've worked together to lay foundations that say, what are the services that our students need? And how do we put those as our foundation? So that students that are receiving multilingual services don't have to compete with core instruction. We can be creative and collaborative and find ways to give both. So they're getting core instruction and additional support for multilingual services. And sometimes, we can even co-teach and work together and provide coordinated services so that our students don't feel pulled, but they have a comprehensive experience in the classrooms. We also have some other linked teams that work along with data, and we have Amal and Kim that are going to talk about that as well.
So one way that we use teams at Hidden Valley is to help support students with interventions for general education students. And so we have a couple teams. One is called SST, our Student Support Team. And so that's a tier-two level support. It's a group of staff who look at students who are referred by teachers, whether it's for academics or behavior or mental health concerns. And we look at what are some ways that we can do some interventions to help support those students at our school and work together as a group to help meet those needs? And then from there, we use data to help determine if the intervention has been effective by getting teacher input, talking with students, talking with families. And then we can move students along to another group that we call STAT or Student Teacher Assistance Team. And that's that tier-three response for general education. So looking even more specifically about how can we draw in all the people that are really needed and get their inputs to help solve problems that students are experiencing at school, whether it be the classroom teacher, parent input, student input, teachers, people on the team, our multilingual teachers, coming at it from different angles to help support student needs and come up with comprehensive plans to help them in general education.
And our system is not built to have a checkpoint where this is going to work. And if it's not working, we're getting frustrated. It's just we're learning about our student and his ongoing process of like, what worked for this student might not work for another. So let's be apprehensive, thinking about ways of having options for everybody that is involved. So as a team, every Monday morning, we meet and we talk about our students because we care about them, but we also learn within that week, what have you learned about this student? And have you interacted with this student? It's not a one-person job. It's all of us combined, working toward achieving the best of the best for our students at Hidden Valley.
And so our next slide is about community partnerships, and I'm so excited to have Jamie Fofana here. She's just a powerhouse parent in our community.
So in addition to having two boys at the school, I also am a PTA board member. And I feel like it's super important for us to get our families involved with different events at the school. Some of the things that Hidden Valley has offered is they have parent partnership meetings, I think monthly. I've gone to some of those. We have PTA meetings every month. We're trying, last year, we created at the end of the year Parent Resource Room. It's connected to the office, and there's a coffee maker in there. There's a little couch area, some comfortable places for parents to sit and talk and meet. And we could do some volunteer work for teachers while we're there. They're in the process of getting a computer, so parents who maybe don't have access at home to be able to print off documents that might be needed for different school events have access to do so at the school. And I think it's just important for us to let our school know or let the community know that that's there for them. And so the parents are in the building, and they're becoming a part of the learning process with kids in the building to volunteer. And yeah, I think that's really great. We have a lot of, we do, we have such a great turnout at the events that we host as part of the PTA. I think we had over 600 kids or 600 family members at our spring event, probably close to that on a really windy day this fall. So just trying to build up those parent partnerships and parent meetings and get people more involved.
Sometimes we refer back to COVID, and our schools were not open to everyone coming in. And so we're really trying to shift that. So the parents feel like if they want to come in and use our parent room and have a meeting together, if they want to volunteer, if they want to come early and talk together and then go to lunch, we want our school to be open and for parents to feel like, this is where I fit. I can come in whenever I want to and make sure that I'm part of this community. We have some other partnerships that we have developed as well. Hidden Valley and Sky Oaks Elementary have been part of the Fast for Success program through the University of Minnesota. And when we talk about the science of reading, we've been given several different benchmark assessments. Fast for Success is one of those that's been approved. And we were fortunate to be able to take a deep dive into how to use that assessment to really develop interventions and supports for students. That's something that, we're in our third year of that partnership, and now it's standard work within our building. Our interventionists work right alongside our classroom teachers to examine data on a, on a pattern format so that we are sure that we are, right up to date, I have confidence that at any time, I could go and talk to a teacher, and they would be able to tell me exactly where a student is and what they're doing for intervention support for them. We have an intervention that was actually started by a previous board member through Glendale Methodist Church. And they come and volunteer at our school and read with children. They've been part of our PALS program after school. And we've started some partnerships. Our music program has started some partnerships where students from Eagle Ridge Middle School are coming to Hidden Valley and doing some teaching and music projects with our, with our youngest learners, our kindergartners, our first and our second graders. And that's been really joyful to see. And so all of what Edward Neal Elementary and Hidden Valley have talked about is that we work really hard to create those strong relationships. And we know that that's the foundation of what's going to build our community. And then we align all of our systems so that we have planned out what are our goals? How do we want to measure? How will we know what children are doing? And how will we address that when we, and students aren't where we want them to be? And so we have created and are creating all of those systems to help that be sustained in our community. in our community so that our children have the voice and the agency and the ability to be world-ready and to go out and impact their environment for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are both of you done? All right. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
Oh, all right.
There you are.
I want to say again, that was a really lovely presentation. Thank you so much for coming in tonight to talk about the amazing impact that you guys are putting on the elementary schools. I do have one really quick question in terms of the affinity groups that are being implemented at the elementary schools.
I want to make sure your mic is on. You can hear.
But yeah, going back to my question about the affinity groups at the elementary school, how is that being implemented? Because I am a proactive participant in our high school's affinity groups, and I can tell there's going to be a lot of differences in how both groups interact amongst these affinity processes.
I can speak from being a principal and going and visiting at Burnsville High School, seeing the impact and the evidence of the power that people feel when they've been part of the affinity groups. And part of Amal coming to our school was to help start that.
So last year, I had the pleasure to work at Burnsville High School and be the Somali cultural liaison, who also led the MSA affinity groups and the Somali affinity group. I have learned a lot. I have learned that you don't learn being Somali Muslim, Asian, or from any other communities at high school. You're born with it. So implementing it at the elementary school, there's a vision that I have. We're putting it in paper. We haven't started. But as an elementary, things are different. So getting to know the students and the family is the key. Having the students love who they are and love their ethnicity, love their color, be able to proudly talk about it in public, be proudly talking about it within their peers, that would eliminate all of the misbehaviors that's happening, where calling names will be out, appreciating other cultures will be appropriate message to them. Just learning to exist together and be a tapestry and be a beautiful human beings because their heart is pure. Nothing has changed them yet. Like you'll talk to a kindergarten, and they don't know the difference between themselves and somebody else. But something happens, and that's what made me think about elementary schools from the high schools. Something happens in our system or the world that we change. And I would love to be the voice for those students, have the platform for them, laugh with them, learn from them. Because growing up, you learn, you can't do this, stay in your line, don't use your voice because you look different. You just go to school and learn math and reading and be a doctor or an engineer. But the shutting of the humanity and the person you are from within, it's something that I would work toward eliminating and seeing the power of, yes, being a Somali American is beautiful, being an Asian American is beautiful, being an Indian American is beautiful, and being yourself is beautiful. So whatever yourself is, we'll appreciate you and we'll love you and we'll have a platform for you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Other? Dr. Warpin, did you have your hand up?
I could go next.
I just have one word to start out with. Impressive. I'm just blown away by what we have going on in our elementary schools. And I hope if there's community members watching, that they recognize what a wonderful district we have and what's going on in our elementary schools. Bar None is so amazing that we should be so proud as a district of what we are doing. I mean, Edward Neal, the idea of recognizing every student, that's so, I just, I'm just so impressed, you know, that you're doing these things. You know, recognizing our students in that way, it's beautiful. I mean, to point out all the students and make them all feel special and important. And Hidden Valley, the interventions are so important, just recognizing that. I've seen that, you know, so many kids just go unnoticed. And having those teams that can figure that out and get to those students and get ahead of it, it's just, it's, I, it's just, I have so many emotions right now. It's like hard to get it all into words, but I just hope that people watching, I mean, you could, you guys could be a PR for our district, just going out and saying, why does somebody want to come to our district? This is why. Because we have these kinds of things happening in our elementary schools. And, you know, no other district can, you know, compare to something like this. I think we have an amazing thing happening here. So thank you for these presentations. I think they're just, it's so great to hear. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks. Director Mersal?
Yes, okay. So Anna summed it up pretty well, but I just, yes, it's hard to follow that. But thank you all. This was an awesome presentation, very heartwarming. I think sometimes we can get a little carried away with like test scores and performance and that kind of stuff, which is very important. But I think herein, the day-to-day human interactions cannot be ever replaced. And this is just so great to hear. So thank you all for the presentation, for coming.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I kind of, off of Director Mersal, it is nice to hear not just test scores because I think the basis in order for us to get to test scores or the achievement gap is developing those trusting relationships between student and teacher and family. And to know how embedded that is, is so impressive. Because we know that, you know, kids can, you know, act out or have behavior struggles. And to have that developing trusting relationship with that student, they know that there's, that the teacher or the instructor or liaison can identify there's something happening. We can talk that we have a relationship. And the student can feel that they're cared for, and they will succeed because they have that foundation. And we'll see reduced behaviors because of those trusting relationships. And so then the test scores will, or whatever test scores, measurements we have, kind of fall into suit. But, but yeah, the foundation is those relationships. And to hear and to see whole community, what I loved about the presentation was hearing from the parents who came, thank you. And, and then just how it's all embedded in each school.
We'll just go around.
It's hard to follow everyone because they pretty much said everything that's on my mind. But I do just want to let you know how much I really appreciate these presentations, not only for us, but for the community that's listening. It's just so important that they know what we're doing in our schools, in case they don't. And I am so impressed with the community outreach and then just that you're, that you're realizing the different ways that students learn and that what you're doing to conquer that. And like Anna said, I'm so impressed and so proud of this district. I always have been, and I have come from another district years ago that I worked in. And that district was good also, but it doesn't hold a candle to this one. This one is so in-depth and really trying to promote student relationships. I'm just, oh, I'm telling the truth, okay? So I'm just being honest, it's great. It's great. So anyway, and so I just appreciate that. I appreciate the support team, this linked teams you were talking about, the PTA, the input, you said how many people were coming to that? That's so impressive. And that parent, little parent support group room, that's awesome. I mean, whoever thought of that? That is just so awesome. So thank you for these presentations. I love hearing it. We love hearing it, I'm sure, I'm speaking for everyone. And thank you for knowing that our students have to learn different ways and for reaching out and making those relationships and knowing how important it is that they do feel different. I mean, that they do learn differently. Everybody learns differently and that you're reaching out to them so that they can feel important in their own difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, I won't, I'll try not to repeat what's already been said. But yes, I mean, this is awesome. We always love hearing about what's going on in our schools. And Lyle, in particular, I appreciated the check-in on the math talk because it's a challenge, I know. And, you know, we're all really hopeful about what the new math curriculum will do for our children, our students and their learning. And I know it's a big lift and, you know, kudos to you. And I know, you know, all of the teachers that are, and the staff that are supporting that effort. So thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. And just, you know, I guess, looking back, you know, I know Christine, you know, you and I have met, you know, when I come to visit whichever school you've been at, you know, data has always been your thing. And relationships, of course, we all have talked about trying to pull people into our schools. And so hearing this very rich presentation about pulling our families into our schools and hearing the numbers of families and loved ones that are coming to our, to our school events and the spaces that are available for them, what a drastic change that is over time. And it just, you know, it's just, it's just wonderful. So, you know, the hard work that you all are putting into your schools to make that difference and the support that you're getting from your staff and from the parents and the PTOs, it's making a difference. And, and everything else that fellow board members have already said, with all the outcomes, it's, it's coming together. So thank you.
I do not want to be redundant, so I will just say I echo my colleagues' statements. I look forward to seeing the results and the impacts of the great work that is obviously being done. Thank you to the two PTO presidents that are here. I was not on the PTO very actively when my kids are in elementary school, but I definitely was a very frequent helper at PTO events. So I know how important and how big of a job it is when you're the president of the PTO. So thank you for all that you're doing to help provide these amazing opportunities for the students and families at the school and really contributing to the richness of that experience. So on that note, thank you very much. Next, I believe we have the Fall Enrollment Report. Presenting will be Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. In a moment. I saw him. There he is. A little bit of a traffic jam getting up front tonight.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Knowing that I will not be able to compete with the quality of the presentation before me, I will try to be brief. Bringing to you tonight our Fall Enrollment Report. Our enrollment report occurs every November and is a reflection of our October 1 student count. So we will review in this presentation what the October 1 population count is, what was the composition, and then we will look back at past data over the previous years. Our current population for the district through early ed through secondary is 7,725. Our K-12 is 7143. Just to let you know, our budget is based upon 7364. So we are below what we had budgeted for this. Last year, as you recall, we kind of flattened, hit the brakes really hard. This year, we are experiencing a sharp decline again. Our current grade level enrollment, as I said, 7143. You can see the numbers for each of the grade levels. Kindergarten, we are experiencing, as many districts across the country, with the decline in birth rates, backing way up to 561 students. For many years, we usually had kindergarten class sizes of around 650. So this has declined quite a bit for us. You also can see that our largest class is grade 12 at 739. So after this year, just the difference between the two is about 170 students swing that we will have with next year's enrollment. Current enrollment by elementary, the average for our elementary schools is 363 students. And you can see the breakdown of those that are above or below the line. Again, our larger schools are fairly significantly higher than that 363, and our smaller neighborhood schools are just under that amount in most cases. Secondary is fairly stable across the different areas. Eagle Ridge and Niclet, just met with the Eagle Ridge principal today, that 642 figure, we moved between 640 to about 650 at Eagle Ridge. So that number kind of fluctuates plus or minus in the area and stuff, just to call that out. Composition of our current students. Three largest populations with ethnicity is our white non-Hispanic at 29%, black not Hispanic at 28, and our Hispanic population is at 27% of our students. Makes up the majority of our students overall. Our special education services is roughly 17% of our population, just under 1,200 students. Our LEP, EL, multilingual students is roughly at 25% of our population, and our free and reduced eligible students is at 62%. This is a breakdown by building with the same ethnicity categories that we talked a little bit about earlier. You can see how each building, the composition of the building as to the percentage of makeup there. Looking then across buildings within the district, our special ed population, again, the district average is 17%. Elementary pretty much falls right in line with that. Secondary is actually a little bit lower, and you can see the makeup with the different buildings. Remember, some of our buildings do house focus programs, which will elevate those numbers or those percentages at sites. Focus programs are typically are setting three programs. Our English learners are multilingual students. District average again is 25%. You can see the makeup is, is higher at the elementary level than the secondary level. And again, what the numbers are represented at the different sites. Our free and reduced populations, again, district average is 62% with the higher representation at the elementary than the secondary. That's not unusual. We typically see a higher percentage at the elementary level. But again, you can see that broken down across the buildings, the different sites. I'll look back to our past data. And just to clarify, all the districts and the schools, public schools in the state report an October 1 number, okay? That goes to MDE. So some of our lookback numbers, when we get into the different graphs, aren't going to have the results of the October 1 until everything is cleaned up, if you will. All the reporting is verified. Two different districts may be reporting the same student. MDE will go through the process, make sure that who actually has the student and clean that up. We won't have that information until early next year. And typically, next November is when we'll report with the lookback. So you can see over the last 10 years what our numbers have looked like. Total residents, that would be the amount of students that live in the district that are eligible to go to school. If we captured all students, we would have a little over 10,000. That number, again, over the years has stayed fairly consistent. Those residents that are attending the district, as last year was 7,088. And again, you can see how that number was actually larger than the year before. That was our flattening and actually a little bump or an increase. That is just K-12, the 7,088 for last year. And then 191 residents attending elsewhere was 3174. So as, as a net residents attending elsewhere, we were short 2,465 students last year attending elsewhere compared to those who are attending the district, which would be about 630 students. Again, just a different way of representing the numbers of students that are, that we serve, including those who are serve, including those who are residents, plus the non-residents that attend 191. This is last year's numbers, 2223. Two different pie graphs with that. And this represents where many of the students, the other, public school districts that they are attending. The largest amount of students are attending Rosemount Apple Valley, which is under 1,100 of our students. Prior Lake Savage is next. And then it kind of breaks down miscellaneous other places, but Bloomington would be shortly after that. A little bit more precise in looking at the trend lines as far as students over the last five years and where they've attended. This table also includes students who are attending different charter schools, as well as the local districts, and the number of students that have been attending there. This one here represents our non-public students that are, students that are attending non-public, not non-public students. So, that number for 2223 was 649 students, which was a fairly significant decline from the previous year. So, we have fewer students attending those, the non-public schools than what have in the past. Trend data for October 1, looking at our early ed students, which includes our ECSE program. It's our special ed, early childhood special education programming, our voluntary pre-kindergarten programming, and our school readiness programming. You can see over the past three years what the comparison for our seat count has been. ECSE and VPK have both increased the numbers over previous years. Our school readiness numbers have declined a little bit. Now, you can kind of see a two-year comparison back-to-back for our elementary. Vista View and William, William Byrne actually have experienced some growth. A little bit of an opinion, especially with Vista View. We worked pretty hard this year on our variance request to other sites, and really impacted the numbers of kindergarteners attending other sites, which I think is what we're experiencing at Vista View with the students staying at home there. In secondary, the high school is, is pretty close to the numbers that they had last year at this point. BOSS a little bit lower. Best has an increase. The two middle schools, Nicollet has, of the two middle schools, experienced the most decline in enrollment. And the middle school for Virtual Academy has also experienced some decline. Our five-year trend, going just a little over 8,000 students in 2020, to a little over 7,100 this year. Kind of giving you some trend data now on the ethnicity makeup over the years by number. We continue to see a decline in our white, not Hispanic students. Other areas where the areas that we've been seeing growth over the past few years is actually in our Hispanic population. It's probably one of our fastest-growing areas. Special education numbers, pretty stable, really, over the last four years as far as the number of students that are being served. But as our overall enrollment declined, the percentage is increasing. Our multilingual students, the, the enrollment trend, again, last year, we, we saw a little bit of a spike. This year, we're about 40 students fewer. But I will indicate that the makeup of the students is a little bit different. We have more that are at Level 1 and 2. Multilingual students are placed into about five different categories by level as far as language proficiency, where they are. So, Level 1 tends to be like a newcomer to, to the country. Level 5 is somebody that is, is approaching exiting EL services. Okay, so that's the, the transition. So, we are seeing more that are at the Level 1, even though the total number of students is fewer. Our free and reduced trends over the years. Last year was a high watermark of 66%. We're at 62% this year. We have a little bit of backing up, but that's actually a pretty good number still, given that many families are automatically qualified for this. Yeah, that wasn't too bad.
Thank you, Stacy. Board members, are there questions and/or comments?
Thank you, Chair Hume. And thank you, Stacy. Just a couple questions. Is the general thinking, you had made a comment about free and reduced being lower in secondary, is the general thinking that free and reduced is generally lower because there are fewer applications, in part because of emancipated minors? And like, or generally, families aren't completing the forms as much?
Well, they're not required to complete the form.
Right.
I mean, that's a voluntary alternative application process, and that's not what is being reflected here. One, we just have fewer students, which could be impacting the percentage as well.
True. Yep. Well, that could be. Okay. Got it. And then, it's been a while since I've asked the question about EL. You had mentioned that, you know, newcomers are generally at, at Level 1, and then at 5, they're being exited. The funding for EL is seven years?
I believe it is seven years for programming, and then the district picks that up. However, the cross-subsidy for EL services has also increased. So, while we are servicing them, we are receiving more money for that. Previously, we've spent the money that we received from the state for EL services, and then had to offset it with our compensatory funds.
Correct. Are we, and if you don't know the answer tonight, it's fine. If you don't, you can get back. Are we finding that most of our students are exiting within the seven years, or?
That wouldn't be the normal trend.
That would not be the normal trend. So, we're still supporting them beyond the seven years?
Yes. And, and when I say normal, I don't mean just for 191. That, that's just not the normal.
In general, across, okay. Got it. Thank you. And then, slide 5. I don't have the title of the slide. I'm sorry. I didn't write that down. There's a distribution of students.
Grade level, October 1 enrollment, K through 5.
That sounds about right. By school.
By school.
Is that what it is? Yep. Looking specifically at Vista View, Edward Neal, and Gideon Pond, how is that distribution impacting your ability to staff district-wide? Is it becoming a challenge in terms of the smaller schools? Yeah. Yep.
Are you talking about all of the elementaries?
Well, just the smaller schools, you know, versus, you know.
Well, the smaller schools, you have fewer sections available, so you will have greater swings. And, and so, you can end up with numbers where the class sizes can drop down 17 or 18, just because of the total number of students within the grade. There's just no good way to break that up. Or, some of them can be even a little bit higher, again, because they're right at that margin. And if we added that extra section, they'd be way lower.
Tiny, tiny.
Our VA elementary, we actually do multi-grade instruction. So, a teacher will be teaching kindergarten and first, second and third. So, that's the way we're addressing the smaller numbers in Virtual Academy. So, we're able to, they're a little bit smaller, but again, you don't have the overhead, so you can have a little bit smaller courses at that level.
Gotcha. And then, segue to Virtual Academy. I was looking at, you know, the basic demographics for Virtual Academy at the different levels. It's the highest in free and reduced. It's skewing higher in special ed. And it's also reflecting a greater representation of diversity among our ethnicities. So, I guess, you know, myself, when our academic outcomes are released, I'm going to continue to be looking at Virtual Academy in terms of how well we're serving the, the students in Virtual Academy, and how well this particular school is doing academically with our students, given that it's a school that has higher concentrations of students in greater need.
And ironically, it's probably one of our, our schools in the district that has the most attraction for open enrollment.
Correct. And, and it's, it's, it's both. It's yes and. Higher demand, and we serve them.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Other comments and questions from board members? All right. Well, in that case, I have a couple of questions. On slides 14 and 15, and maybe you said this and I just missed it, but could you define tuitioned out? I think there were about 70, and I wasn't sure. But, so I was at private school, because that was where they're paying tuition to go to a private school. So, remind me what that means.
And I want to make sure, I'm not sure if these are the students who may be attending some of, for like, special ed students that may be tuitioning out to other areas is primarily where the majority.
Our 917 rep is nodding her head at me.
Yeah. So, in many cases, that's.
Special ed.
Right.
That is helpful. And then, the other thing that was discouraging is it seemed like, you know, when we've had these conversations every single year, we often focus on losing students as they transition from elementary to middle school. And I was noticing when I was looking at the numbers this year, yes, that's still happening, but it seemed like we had some pretty significant losses at the, at each grade of the elementary school. I compared each of the year's cohorts, last year's first graders, and who are this year's second graders, and every single grade dropped.
Yep.
And I don't expect you or you necessarily have this answer tonight, but I would like to understand at some point in the not-too-distant future, if we are actually losing more students at the elementary level, and if so, why? Because that's a big concern.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. I think in the previous presentations, you heard the response to that. Our school staff really looked at finding out why they were leaving. It's about their experience, and it's about having those relationships. And so, you see a marked difference in the school report for this year. But we'll gather more data for you. We did, as you requested, have exit surveys for our families. Stacy can provide a little bit more detail about that. We don't get as many completed as we would hope. So, we are looking at that. Stacy, I don't know if you wanted to add a little bit about that.
We actually get very few of them returned.
I've had the same experience in my day job, exit surveys.
So, it's really, the schools providing that information. This is why we think they left us based on. And as Amal mentioned, it's really getting to know the children and their families. So, thank you.
Really striking, looking at that 10-year table, and the number of residents has gone down very little. But the number of open enrolled out, and I know we don't have this school year, but the number has gone up by 1,000 students that have, are open enrolling to other districts over the last 10 years. So, I think that's something where, when we talk about things like declining birth rates, you know, smaller school-age populations, we have an opportunity in this district, if we can get them to stay, to stabilize our enrollment over the long run. And I've said that multiple times. This is not something new for me. But it's something I think we need to continue to be talking about and looking at.
And I also think we can learn, in my report you hear about feedback from our high school students about the impact of the pathways, which I think has led to stabilization at the high school.
Well, that was, I'm glad you said that, because when I was doing my little cohort comparison, I think every grade at the high school had actually increased since last year. So, at the high school level, I think once we get them to that point, they're staying. But we need to get them to stay all 13 years. So, all right. Unless there are other questions, we can move on. Thank you very much, Stacy. Next, we receive reports from board committees, and then we'll do board appointments and school assignments. But we'll start with committees. Is there a, because we only have one meeting. We only have one board meeting this month.
Got it.
Yes. Thanksgiving is when we would normally have our next second board meeting.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
I'm not going to be here that night.
Yeah, me neither.
So, is, is, I'm guessing, I know the answer, is there a legislative committee meeting report?
No. Not at this minute, because legislative committee isn't meeting until the end of the month.
All right. Is there a policy committee report?
There is. I reported on our previous meeting. So, I will just report that the policy committee meets next on Tuesday, November 28th, at 5:00.
Thank you very much. And our negotiations chair is not here. Is there a?
Just that we continue to meet, making progress on language. And we meet next on November 30th at 5:15 here at Diamond Head.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Are there any other board appointment or school assignment reports that we would like to share this evening?
I have a school assignment.
Director Connor?
Okay. So, I, on Wednesday, October 18th, I went to visit William Byrne. A child from my neighborhood, who is attending kindergarten there, invited me to her school. And her mother told her that, yeah, she's on the school board, so she, she's over all the schools. She's over about 20 schools. So, the little girl said, oh, will you come to my school? So, I told her, sure, I would come to her school. So, I went there. I was very impressed with the, with their, their security when I went in, because you have to go through two securities. They have what they call a Kelly-shaped video, so they can see you, see who's coming in there. They also have neighborhood watch, which I'm also very impressed with. There's a lot of homes right across the street, excuse me, from William Byrne. And they said their neighbors do participate in neighborhood watch, and watch for any cars that are just kind of hanging around, or anything suspicious. So, I think that's really cool. The children on the playground, I know, I don't think they knew me, but they did wave. So, I thought that was kind of impressive. And also, I, oh, the person who took me on the tour was Missy, so Melissa, if you're out there. And she is, I guess, the school secretary. She took me on a tour, and she also took me to the little girl whose kindergarten class I went to visit. We went to her class. I was really impressed how well, the little girl, Maya, which I'll show you. This is the little cutie. How, how well they were reading at kindergarten level. And then she was showing me all the activities in her room that they do. And really impressive. One of the, the third grades, third graders at William Byrne, some, some of those classrooms do not have doors. And so, one of the teachers, did I write her name down? Ms. Brock? Broach? I think it was Broach. Anyway, her and her dad created a portable door that's on wheels, that can, you know, it, well, it's, it can wheel around, but also it just opens and shuts. So, she made a door for her classroom. I thought that was really creative. And I was just really impressed. I, I'm into the security of, of children, and I just thought that that building was, was very impressive to me. I liked their learning, and I was, again, very impressed with the reading for, at the kindergarten age. And they're also, just for everyone to know, in case anyone didn't, they're having a coat drive for children, and it goes all the way through November 22nd. So, anyone who has gently used coats that their children have grown out of, they'd appreciate it if you bring them to their school, to the entryway. And they'd appreciate giving those to the children that need them. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Are there other board member reports? Doesn't look like it. All right.
I can just say that 917 usually meets the first Tuesday of the month, which was Election Day, which we weren't meeting. So, we meet this coming Tuesday. So, I'll report in December.
So, you'll have all kinds of reports. So you'll have all kinds of reports at the next meeting?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, we will receive a report from Cody Wong. It's our student board representative. Welcome, Cody.
Thank you. I'm starting off strong, I'll be talking about Burnsville Strong. We had a positive pumpkin event, which was critically acclaimed by our student population, where students were able to pick up pumpkins across the school campus and write positive little messages on them on the back, and return them back to Ms. Hanson, one of the advisors for Burnsville Strong, to get some candy. So lots of fun engagement there. And then also, there'll be a big group meeting next Wednesday, October, November fifteenth, where we'll be having a Q and A with Principal Sandoval, discussing the student leadership and understanding what we can do to help better support our students from both an administrative and a student body's perspective. The affinity groups have also started doing a bunch of plannings for some events going into the upcoming school year, most notably include the Black Student Union Showcase in February twenty twenty-four, and then a possible joint meeting with the Muslim Student Association and the Asian Student Association in March twenty twenty-four. And then on top of that, the Asian Student Association will be hosting a Diwali celebration next Tuesday, next Wednesday, November fifteenth, where you'll be able to learn about the holiday of Diwali, explore the different foods, and also get an opportunity to immerse yourself in some pretty amazing culture, especially for our South Asian population. And then youth and government, seventeen students attended the launch event where students all over, all over Minnesota were able to get some training and understanding to the youth and government program. And then there was twenty-two confirmed students attending the conference in January. Two Burnsville High School students, Kaylee Krampson and myself, taught classes at the event on civic discord and the day in the life of being a delegate. So a lot of impressive student leadership on a statewide level with a bunch of students across Minnesota. And then on October twenty-eighth, we will be having a special meeting with Senator Lindsey Port to talk about youth advocacy and what it means to be part of an ever-changing society where there's lots of rights and wrongs, morality disagreements, et cetera. So lots to look forward for that. And then also, DECA had thirty-two, thirty-two students participating, which has doubled from their numbers last year. They had a competition last week with two medal winners, A.J. Kinsel and Ryan Brown. And then Matilda opened up tonight at the Marath Center in Burns, at Burnsville High School, and they had their senior preview yesterday on the seventh, and then there'll be shows going on between this weekend and next weekend. So hopefully everyone's able to come and support our theater guild. Some other important updates with our athletics. Cross Country had three state qualifiers, Carly Lamott, Liam Mero, and Quinn Hess, and they had their meet that took place on the fourth. And then for girls volleyball, they won a match against Saint Michael Albertville High School on October fourteenth. And then three seniors earned the American Volleyball Coaches Association Best and Brightest Award, which were Hannah Rude, Emma Baker, and Ava Grover. And then Burnsville High School will be hosting their blood drive on November seventeenth with a bunch of students getting involved, planning it either on making sure that the event runs smoothly or donating blood, which is really impressive. It will take place again on November seventeenth, which is a Friday from eight o'clock a.m. to two o'clock p.m. And then I also had the amazing opportunity to attend the Minnesota School Board Association's Student School Board Development Event on October twenty-fourth. And there I was able to meet and connect with a bunch of other student board representatives at different districts across Minnesota, and I also learned a lot of new skills, new connections, and hope to bring that back to our district to better our student voices. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cody. The next item on the agenda is to receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you Chair Hume and members of the board. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about a point of pride for our school district, and especially for Burnsville High School. In October, a team of one ninety-one staff led by Director of Educational Equity, Isis Buchanan, our Burnsville High School Culture Liaison, Tommy Gaston, Assistant Superintendent, Chris Belmont, and one ninety-one Virtual Academy teacher, Landon Parkin. They presented at the Minnesota Association of School Administrators about how Burnsville High School and the district are leveraging and supporting affinity groups as a way to truly empower our brilliant students and staff. And last week, students spoke at our Instructional Leadership Professional Development Session about their life experiences with the pathways in our schools. This helped center student experience and demonstrated the life-changing outcomes that are possible as we continue to grow pathways from pre-K to twelfth grade. Current and recent high school graduates shared that their experiences in the pathways classes helped build their confidence and that they can actually see themselves embarking on a career that they want to pursue. They shared that the pathways provide so many opportunities and advised us to begin informing middle school students about these opportunities so they are better informed when they enter high school. One student, when asked to give leaders advice, he shared, you're doing a good job. Just keep going. Sometimes that's all you have to do is just keep going. So these are just two examples of how we're living our core value of student agency and ensuring that students are proactively building a day-to-day experience that leads them toward their passion and their purpose. And once again, I'm truly reminded that we are a model for districts across the state nationally, and I would say internationally, when it comes to making sure our voices are heard, especially of our students. And lastly, today is National Community Education Day. So as you know, community education provides early childhood, youth, and adult programming. So from infants to our elders, they provide the services. Community education is truly the heart of all the communities we serve, and I want to thank them for all that they do for our district and our communities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right. Through a quirk of the schedule, because we only have one meeting this month, we did, we had two agenda items for board member reports, so, so as to not get whatever it's called when I'm out of order, I'm just going to ask, are there any more board member reports?
AMSD.
Oh, do you have a board member report? All right, well, I'm glad I said something.
We met AMSD, met on November third. We had two speakers, Katie Lappell, which is Executive Director of Education, Leadership, U of M, and then we had a super, the superintendent from District one ninety-seven, Peter Olson's colleague. And they just did some surveys on tasks and responsibilities of principals. I'll just give you just a few pointers. Of course, this is all on their website, so I won't go into the, just some things that were reasonable, I mean, that stood out. One of the main tasks that principals feel they should be doing is running the school and showing leadership, keeping order, and leading their teachers, their staff. But they have some barriers, which are student behavior issues, handling, teacher issues, handling issues with parents, and then updating the superintendent, informing authorities if needed, and knowing all policies and procedures. So in other words, they have a lot on their plate, and these are not just our district, it's, you know, principals from different districts too are all included in this survey. So kind of just to let us know, to let me know, that they are carrying quite a weight. And the results, some top results were mostly, these principals are really concerned about mental health issues of teachers and students. Seventy-nine percent showed that they really want to have more leadership responsibility in the school, but they feel like half this work is unattainable. Unfortunately, they spend more time with students, family, and community interactions than instructional leadership with their staff. But they do feel confident in their instructional leadership and decision-making, but they feel some, like I said, this is not just our district, this is from all, and they do feel some pressure from, because they feel like they have five bosses as opposed, because they're serving teachers, students, families, the district, and the superintendent. Principals don't really know, oh, never mind, forget that part. Okay, thirty-four percent of principals live in the area that they instruct in, and then they just talked about what to do about it, because they, they were asking, like, what could they do in the, part of the survey, and what the two speakers were talking about says that they need to have trust between staff and subordinates and feel like they can be more personable and show some vulnerability in their leadership. So, and that was in my report at that.
Thank you very much. Any others? All right. We will move on then. We will move on, in fact, to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Tonight, we are being asked to approve the Education, Identity, and Access Management Resolution. Is there, is that right? Oh, hold on. I'm sorry. Consent agenda. It's the baseball trip next. Oh, the foundation grant.
No.
No.
It's the application for preliminary approval of extended field trip to Scottsdale, Arizona. Is that right?
Yes. I apologize, everyone. All right. Next, we will be approving and approving. All the baseball players in the back are like, come on, guy.
We've been waiting.
Preliminary approval for, of an extended field trip to Scottsdale, Arizona for March twenty-third through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Speakers are Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Kevin Kleiner, Athletic Director, Justin Bannett, BHS Baseball Head Coach, and Tracy Dishar, parent. Welcome, everyone, and sorry for the confusion.
No, thank you Chair Hume. Dr. Battle and members of the board, this is kind of the seventh inning stretch portion of the evening. So we have representatives of the athletic department, as well as our, in particular, our Burnsville High School baseball team here to present preliminary approval of an extended field trip that happens to include five school, students being away for five school days.
Thank you, Dr. Belmont. Good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair Hume, and the rest of the school board members. I'm Justin Bannett, Head Baseball Coach at Burnsville High School. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share about the potential field trip to Arizona in the spring. As mentioned, speaking this evening with me are Kevin Kleiner, Athletic Director, and Tracy Dishar, parent of Jordan Dishar, class of two thousand nineteen, and Nicholas Dishar, class of two thousand twenty-four. So in two thousand five, former head coach Mick Shoal began taking a group of baseball players and coaches on a spring trip. Since that time, the baseball team has traveled to Arizona for sixteen of those seasons, only missing in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one due to COVID-nineteen-related cancellations. Over those sixteen trips to Arizona, the baseball program has formed relationships with members of the hotel staff, members of the Paradise Valley High School community, including the athletic director and multiple coaching staffs at Paradise Valley. Each trip, members of the Burnsville coaching staff are approached by hotel employees, hotel guests, restaurant employees, or the Paradise Valley, Paradise Valley High School community to share how impressed they are with our players' behaviors. The trip teaches our players about more than just the game of baseball. We emphasize the importance of respect, responsibility, hard work, and grit in life as well as baseball. If approved, a group of around twenty-eight players and six coaches would travel to Scottsdale, Arizona on Saturday, March twenty-third. We would participate in team meetings on Saturday and team-building activities on Sunday. Monday through Thursday, we would practice each morning for about four hours before returning to our hotel for team lunch and mandatory study sessions. We would then return to Paradise Valley High School in the evening for an additional three-hour practice session on Monday and Tuesday with a team scrimmage on Wednesday evening. These practices allow us to install all of our team's strategies in one week on a full-size baseball field that wouldn't be possible without this trip. The team would travel back to Minnesota on Thursday, March twenty-eighth to return to school the following day, Friday, March twenty-ninth. The anticipated out-of-pocket cost of the trip would be about eight to nine hundred dollars per player, in addition to additional spending money, or personal spending money, for dinner and snacks. Throughout the year, players have multiple opportunities to fundraise for this trip. Players can sell and deliver water softener salt bags twice per year. Players can sign up for shifts to bag groceries at Cub Foods in Kowalski's throughout the holidays, including all the way through the Super Bowl. Money for these events can go on the players' accounts, and those funds can be used to reduce the out-of-pocket expense for trips like this. Players also participate in a blast fundraiser website, which is used to ask for donations to the program. These funds also are used to help reduce the cost of the trip for each player. The Booster Club is also willing to work with players and families, in which the cost of the trip happens to be a barrier. I mentioned earlier that the trip is about more than just the game of baseball. Sam Schliemann, class of two thousand eighteen and current coach, shared that the trip is a great learning experience for the athletes to figure out how to rely on peers rather than parents. These players spend a lot of time together on this trip. They learn how to coexist with each other. They learn how to work through any differences they may have with each other. When we leave for Arizona, we leave as twenty-eight individuals, but when we return, we return as one team. I'd like to now turn it over to Tracy Dishar, who has had, as I mentioned, two boys come through the program in recent years and attend the spring trip.
Thank you, Coach Bannett. Thank you to Dr. Battle and members of the board. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. As I said, it's been said, I have the privilege of being the parent of two boys who have been through the baseball program. Nicholas is still going through the program, and both have attended the trip to Arizona. My older son, Jordan, has gone twice as a junior and a senior, and the spring will be Nick's third time going. And I started by thinking about what to say. I started by asking them, tell me about what this trip has meant to you. I kind of wanted to get their perspective, what they see from it, and Nick's response was, he, he was so proud of the fact that he was able to go as a sophomore. He was chosen as one of the underclassmen that was able to go, and he said that what was very important to him is that he really didn't know a lot of those upperclassmen when he went. He knew of them. And when they go on the trip, they are assigned roommates, and it's often a mix, you know, of, of grade levels and players that may or may not know each other. And he said that he felt that that was valuable, because he got to know players that he would never have known as well before, which really brought them together, bonded them as a team, and helped them to keep that bond and start their season strong. My son, Jordan, was a three-sport varsity athlete in Burnsville, and the reason I say that is that he said that of all the things he did in high school sports, the trip to Arizona is his most memorable because of the people that he got to know, the friendships he made. Some of his best friends are still his friends today, likely his friends for life. And he talked about just what it was like to leave home, to go to be with these coaches that he, you know, looked up to and respected, and that that was such an important part of his years in Burnsville. So that's one of his very favorite memories. And when I asked them about that, I also said, you know, did you know about this trip? I'm thinking, did you, when you were younger, did you know this was coming as, as a high school player? And they both said, well, yes. And they went through Burnsville traveling baseball for ten years, between the two of them, our family has, and they know that, they said, when you're twelve years old in Burnsville, you have the opportunity to go to Cooperstown, which is another one of those experiences that's just really life-changing for the team. And they said, and then they knew, once you get to high school, you go to, you want to get to Arizona. That's the trip you want to get to. That when you get to that point, that it just makes you feel like, you know, that you've made it, you've got to that point where you are now a part of something bigger than yourself. And when I think about what both of my boys say, said, excuse me, and when I reflect, it, it just makes me think about the valuable lessons in life that they have learned from that trip. And I think to, I think you said, Sam Schliemann had said, and I was thinking the same thing, that those things in life that they always have their parents to go to right away, they don't. You know, they play six hours a day, a plus-six hours of baseball. It's hard work. They're tired. I remember hearing from boys, not very often because they're so busy, but when you do hear from them, they're tired, they hurt, they're sore, things didn't go the way they wanted, they're facing some adversity. They're facing some adversity and having to problem-solve that in a kind of a real-world perspective. And I think that was just such an invaluable experience for both of my boys. So coming to you from the perspective of a parent, that is one of the biggest advantages to doing something like this. It is very valuable time. It is life-changing for these boys. Some of them, it is the first time they've been away and able to do something like this in their life, something that is leading them towards that adulthood that they're so close to, but yet not quite there. And I believe they grow up a lot during that week. You know, they are having to deal with a lot of things that they might not think about managing their money. Do I, you know, I got to think about the whole week? This is how much money I have? You know, do I have enough money to go to, you know, In-N-Out or wherever they go every night? So all those little things are big decisions, and they come back, different kids. And I noticed that in both of the boys. They came back, I remember when we picked up Nicholas the first time when he was a sophomore. You know, he saw us, he got off the plane and hey, gave us a quick hug, but he went right to the friend group over by the baggage claim. He really didn't want to stand and talk to my husband and I. It was all about the group. And I thought to myself, that's what you want. You want to see that built in your children. So in closing, I just believe that I speak for all the parents of the players who have this experience and have the opportunity to do this. And when I say that it is really a life-changing experience for the boys to do, and it's one of those things they will always remember. And I believe that it is just so important, and if the boys are still allowed to do this, to continue the traditions that Burnsville has had for so long, I think that is an important piece, is to be part of something bigger than yourself, which is what we really want our teenagers to be thinking about, is something more than themselves. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I'd also like to recognize that the timing of this trip is not ideal. We understand that students will be missing four days of school if this trip is approved. However, I am confident that our student athletes will be able to complete the coursework either while on the trip or shortly after we return. During the season, we regularly check students' grades just to make sure that they're meeting the expectations of being student athletes. We have had to have conversations in prior years with players that have not met those expectations. And as a Burnsville High School teacher and coach, I emphasize the importance of players being leaders in the community as well as in the classroom. I'm proud to say that the Burnsville High School baseball team has won the All-State Academic Team Award at either the gold standard or silver standard for the last 10-plus years. This is a good group of kids. If approved, players will attend mandatory study sessions each day on the trip. These study sessions will be one to two hours in length, whatever the players need. And players will be organized into study groups supervised by one of the members of the coaching staff. Players will also be required to notify teachers in advance of the absence and collect work before the trip if possible. The high school baseball season begins on March 11th with the week of arm care and conditioning work. Full practices and tryouts begin the following week, the week of March 18th. Our trip proposal is for the week after that, March 23rd through the 28th. And that's once teams have been formed and we're getting ready for the start of this competitive season. This upcoming season, the first available contest date is Monday, April 1st for high school baseball. And Burnsville is scheduled to play the first game of the season in Rochester on Friday, April 5th, before our spring break. And our teams need to be ready to play by then. So I'm sure the question has been asked about why not go during our spring break to Arizona so players don't miss any school? And as mentioned, we have a game before that on Friday, April 5th. And we also have three conference games scheduled for the week of April 8th through the 12th. Going on a trip during the spring break this year, during spring break this year, would require us to move these three games. I'd like to turn it over to Kevin Kleiner, Athletic Director, to share the impact of moving games to a later date in the season.
Thanks, Coach Bennett. Dr. Battle, Chair Hume, and members of the board, thank you for having us tonight and hearing us, hearing this proposal out. To speak on that, there is some definite, kind of getting into the nuts and bolts of it in that regard. We have three conference games scheduled during our spring break. To move all three of them not only impacts us and compresses our season later. It's not the best look as, you know, wanting to be a good conference member because now we're kind of putting even our conference, fellow conference teams in a tough spot as well to ask them to move out and stack up games. None of us can control the weather, you know. There could be three feet of snow on the ground here during spring break, but it also could be beautiful. None of us would want to be sitting here, or they're in Arizona, it's beautiful there, and we're here in Minnesota, and we could have been playing games during our spring break here. Knowing that we're going to put, from a practical standpoint, as a former baseball coach myself, putting us behind the eight ball a little bit from a pitching standpoint, which is a big part of the game of baseball. And there's limits on how much an individual can pitch. And it just, if we're stacking three more games in the back end of our season when our opponents are not, is a tough, tough thing. So just as a practical from a baseball standpoint. And then another element of that is also umpires. Even last year, our signer would tell us, that date's not available, no more umpires available. It's just every sport is kind of dealing with that lack of officials. That's a real element as well, if we have to move three games off of spring break. So if they could, if they were to go to Arizona during spring break. So there are some real practical things involved with moving those games. And then I'd like to just add a couple other elements from my lens. I want, you all know that this trip is accessible to those that are, you know, qualified to go, that there is, it's accessible to all students. You know, whatever, whatever that may be, if there's a financial hardship there, the baseball program and boosters and everyone involved will make that a reality for them. We won't let that stand in the way of an individual going. And then also, Coach Bennett mentioned this, and just from my, you know, year, almost year of being in the district, knowing that there's not just, it's not just a baseball trip. It's not just baseball coaches going with, with these young men. There are teachers as well. And I know that academic piece will be taken care of while they're down there. The beautiful thing that we, you know, all know, even during the pandemic and whatnot, is technology and the ability to do schoolwork remotely. I really don't think they'll miss a beat. And I know they'll be proactive to work with their teachers ahead of time to get what they can in advance and then do it down there, again, under the direction of not just baseball coaches, but again, teachers with them. So I really feel confident about the academic work that will be done while they're there. And then ultimately, I do think this is a really good microcosm of what we want to be about when we talk about athletics and education-based athletics. That this is, they're going to learn life lessons in a really short amount of time here. Beyond, this is more than just a baseball trip. This is like a life experience trip, you know, how to live with other people, how to make food, buy groceries, manage your money, go to bed at a reasonable time, all things that they're going to get hit with when they go to college or after high school life. But this is an educational trip, more than just a baseball trip. So we appreciate your consideration and support. Thank you.
Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item? Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mursal. Any discussion? Director out.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Thank you. This is probably the most thoughtful, well-thought-out, well-illustrated presentation of a field trip that I've heard, period. You answered my questions before I even had to ask them. I was wondering why, you know, like you've never presented this field trip to us before, and I was wondering, well, why now? And you answered it. And I appreciated all the materials upfront, in addition, the family stories, the parent stories, the player stories. Dr. Belmont, this is kind of a model for helping us to understand what exactly is happening on a field trip, the why is behind it. So really, thank you. This is just great. I do have one question. In terms of the fundraising, I heard definitely individual fundraising, right, is happening. Is the team and the boosters are obviously helping, and there are opportunities to help others where finances might be a barrier. Is there collective fundraising so that, you know, if someone's account is shy some, right? There's, the group is helping to fundraise collectively?
Yeah, so I can speak a little to that. The, many of the fundraising events that we do throughout the year, like the BLAST fundraising website, we do a bingo night. And those funds also, they kind of go into that booster general fund. But what that's used is that's helped to bring the cost down already for all players
Got it.
to a manageable level. And then players are able to do some of those individual ones, like signing up for the Cub Foods and the Kowalski's bagging. The students that, or the players that sign up for those shifts get to help share those funds that they work for. And then the, the salt bagging, or the selling the salt bags. That's, the more they sell, the more from each bag they get to put into their player account.
I'm familiar with the salt bagging. And I think, yeah, I just really appreciated the student and family story. It really kind of brought the trip to life. So again, thank you very much. Really, really well illustrated. So Chair Hume, back to you.
Any others? I had a very similar comment. I was prepared to ask about fundraising, about missing school, about, there was a third thing that you mentioned. But you anticipated all of them. I would encourage any future field trip groups to watch this chunk of the video for tips on how to make the presentation to answer, preemptively answer the board's questions. So thank you very much. If there are no other questions, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Have fun, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
It was worth the wait.
We'll see if they agree.
Yeah.
It's a lesson in civic engagement and public service, too.
Well, we'll wait just a couple of seconds to let the room calm down a little bit before we move on to the next agenda item. Oh, yes, they're excited.
We've got the girls lacrosse.
All right, we've had our pause. Next, we are being asked to approve the Cooperative for Girls Lacrosse. Kevin Kleiner, Athletic Director, is once again presenting the recommendation. Welcome back, Kevin.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Board Chair Hume, and members of the board. Thank you for listening to this proposal for a girls hockey co-op with, with us? Sorry. I'm in winter in this weird, it's just like fall, it's a winter, talking about spring break.
What season is it?
My mistake. Girls lacrosse, I apologize. Girls lacrosse co-op with Bloomington Kennedy High School and United Christian Academy. Those two had previously had a co-op already, so that's, that's why the United Christian Academy is a part of it along with Kennedy. So it's us joining that co-op, be under the name Blazing Eagles. Kennedy-Burnsville Blazing Eagles would be the full kind of co-op name. Previously, we were with Apple Valley. That it kind of, again, in my time with the district, I think it run its course. We had two seniors in the co-op last year. And largely, just to be upfront with you, we have a much better partnership in boys, we're currently with Boys Lacrosse with Kennedy, really good relationship there. And Kennedy is similar to us where they really, they need that partnership with us and have opened the door to Girls Lacrosse to join, to mirror our Boys Lacrosse program, you know. And there's a lot of good in that as well, that when we talk lacrosse, we're talking about the same layout of program, like same schools involved in the co-op, so there's a lot of benefit there. Kennedy is very open to having, I would say, more equal representation of like games at Burnsville High School. Last year, we had zero Girls Lacrosse games at our beautiful stadium. So they're much more of a partner in it, mutually beneficial to one another. We got a lot, truthfully, a lot of work to do to get more participants in Girls Lacrosse. We're hoping that having more of the actual lacrosse happening on our campus will help attract our students to play instead of it all being Apple Valley High School, it could's been the last number of years. So that's the, that's the long story here, certainly answering questions. So I guess a lot, other piece, I'll add that, if you wasn't in the notes, but financially speaking, with, with the number of participants we have, this is a much better financial situation from a responsibility that we would contribute to the co-op. We, we would be responsible to handle the transportation costs, which is significantly less than the 50-50 split we have with Apple Valley in that co-op. Your regard to any, the number of participants, it was just 50-50 regardless. So you can imagine they had 30-something, we had two, and we, 50-50 split was, was a tough financial thing to, to take in. So this is a better, in that regard as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb, seconded by Director Out. Any discussion? Director Out.
Just one question. There are approximately 25 or so players. Is that what I remember?
That might be a little high. Part of the reason Kennedy wants to is their numbers aren't stellar either.
Gotcha.
And the United Christian Academy, I think, only had one or two players last year.
And what's the average desired size of a team?
Good question. Think, think soccer when you think lacrosse in terms of numbers. So to have JV and varsity, ideally, you'd be at least into the 25 to 30 area. They play 11 on the field. Ballpark 15 per level would be ideal. You can get away with less, and some, some players can play on both teams with a limit of like, however, with number of quarters they can play in a night, similar to other sports. But if things go really well, we would have enough to have varsity and JV. That's, that's the goal.
And with slow growth and over time, obviously ample opportunity to play.
Oh, definitely, yeah. There, there would not be any cutting in this sport this, this spring or in the foreseeable future. Certainly not, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, in that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we are being asked to approve the Financial Audit Report. The recommendation is being presented by Tyler Dean, Director of Finance. Welcome, Tyler.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Superintendent Dr. Battle, members of the board. At the last meeting, Bergen KDV presented the Financial Audit Report for fiscal year 2223. The presentation showed the information from the Communications Letter, which is a summary of the more detailed, comprehensive financial report. The highlights of the audit report include an unmodified audit report or a clean audit, no compliance issues, no material weaknesses in internal controls, no single audit findings related to federal programs, no legal compliance findings. The general fund, unassigned fund balance increased by 3.7 million. And the total general fund balance increased by almost 5 million. Now that 2223 is closed, we will use those audit results as we begin looking at our revised 2324 budget and the 2425 budget, and consider how those results will impact our budget assumptions. Therefore, I recommend the Board of Education approve the Financial Audit Report for 2223.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mursal. Any discussion? Seeing none, I have just a comment. So if there are no questions, I just want to take a moment to once again congratulate you, Tyler, and your team on winning the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials last month. I know it's how, is a very prestigious award that speaks to the commitment, dedication, and good work that you and your team are doing to ensure the district's budget and finances are in order. So thank you very much. And I think this audit report that was presented at the last board meeting- And I think this audit report that was presented at the last board meeting is a great reflection of that well-deserved award, so thank you so much. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we are being asked to approve, on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 406, public and private personnel data. Speaker will be Stacy Solvine. Welcome again, Stacy.
Good evening again, board members. Dr. Battle, I'm bringing to you on the first reading basis, Policy 406, public and private data, personnel data. This was reviewed by the Policy Review Committee on October 24th. The changes represent changes to the law that occurred on July 1, and regarding providing personnel data, private personnel data to labor organizations. So that's what is reflected in the changes of this policy. And it is my recommendation to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 406, public and private personnel data.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Stacy. Next, we are being asked to approve, on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 613, graduation requirements. This recommendation is being presented by Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Hume, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I am here this evening to bring forward the Policy 316 that was reviewed by the Policy Review Committee on October 24, 2023. Changes to the policy were from the Minnesota School Board Association. They made legislative changes to updating the definitions and also adding the ethnic studies course provision, and our administration updated the graduation standards to align to the new legislation laws. It is my recommendation that you approve on first reading basis the changes to Policy 316, graduation requirements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mursal. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll just say my customary, I always appreciate the background of why certain changes are made, so thank you for the clarification that it's largely the result of the legislature. Always appreciate it. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we are prepared now to adjourn to a work session to receive an update regarding the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. But first, I think we will take a 10-minute break? Is 10 minutes good? 10 minutes, I need a minute. It's hot in here tonight.
Ready back?
... with the city of Burnsville. There is no agreement between the city of Burnsville and us on a temporary agreement or the pause to the existing MOU. Previously, I had shared themes capturing the perspectives of students, staff, and families regarding the impact of our current situation of not having SROs present at the building in order to assess what next steps should be taken, if any, around school safety and security. Also, I shared the possibility of adding a dean position at Burnsville High School, and currently the administration is in the process of interviewing candidates. Per questions from the board, from board members, tonight I want to share some implications for not having an onsite SRO. First, I'll begin with a reminder about the incredible work of our school resource officers. Onsite SROs make visits to classrooms. They provide student support, that positive school climate, and crime prevention. This means that staff, students, and families receive consultation and in support in areas such as safety and mental health, and they help provide some interagency coordination and support to help students succeed. They also, per our agreement, they served in a positive school climate role by being visible and providing authentic communication with staff and students. Last but not least, they, SROs provide school safety and security measures by being involved in discussions about planning, implementing, and reviewing school safety and security protocols by routinely attending meetings and being active and engaged participants in those meetings. They promote school safety and security through communication with staff, students, and families. Other implications include legal fees. As of October 25th, we have incurred $6,037 in attorney fees. We have continued family concerns about the lack of onsite SROs. At the October 26 Spanish-speaking and Somali parent meetings, attendings had questions about the SROs being pulled from Burnsville High School. Parents questioned why there are no officers located onsite, and they wanted to know how the school is operating without SROs. The featured guest at both parent meetings that night was Principal Jesus Sandoval, as well as the new cultural liaisons. Parents said they're not happy because they felt their children were safer with an officer being onsite rather than having to call for a police officer after the fact if there's a crisis requiring law enforcement response. So in reality, the anticipated response time without SROs in the building does go up, and national data does suggest that response times are diminished when you have an onsite officer present. Parents also share concerns about fighting in the community carrying over to the high school and also support for those students that may be experimenting with drugs. So to give you a final update, I have required additional staff to receive Safety Care III training. Now, this is extensive training to intervene in the case of fights. And we have continued to fund the chemical health specialist position at the high school and added a specialist at the middle school. And as I said, we are in the process of hiring another dean. I am incredibly thankful that the Burnsville Police Department has continued active communication with Dr. Belmont and the Burnsville High School administration because, as I shared earlier, about the work of onsite SRO. So how do we still continue to have that support? So they have been redefining and reimagining the partnership to support the students, families, and staff. For example, we had Captain Matt Smith attend one of the parent meetings. Families were very concerned about safety related to the Israeli and Hamas conflict, did a wonderful job coming to speak to parents and answering their concerns. So we still have that partnership in evolving new ways. So it is my hope that the city of Burnsville receives the clarity they need from the legislature so that SROs may return to their onsite duties per the MOU. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Board members, are there comments or questions at this point as far as where we are with this process?
I guess I just have one question. Obviously, Dr. Battle, you're in the process of hiring another dean. When the time, should, when, if, should the time come that the city receives the clarification that it needs for SROs to return to the building? What has our legal counsel said in terms of what that would look like? Because I'm assuming we're going to have a dean in place, and obviously, we can't have both in the building at the same time, both an SRO and a dean in the building at the same time. Financially, we just can't support that.
So regarding the finances, I haven't specifically asked the general counsel, but remember, we have not been paying.
Correct.
We don't expect to pay our portion. So we still have that money in reserve. So I don't know if Stacy Solvine wants to.
Well, I mean, in terms of the, like, it's, we, 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 it's our school. So it would be you working with the city in terms of what that transition would look like because the dean position, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but the city wouldn't automatically assume that, okay, we have, we have what we need from the legislature, therefore tomorrow our SROs are returning to the, to the school.
I think that is what the city might assume.
That, that's, right, that's, I mean, so that's my, I want to understand, you're, we're hiring a dean, we have no clarity on what the transition looks like, or do we?
Oh, you mean, like, to, to, would the dean position end because the SROs are back? Because we don't need to pay for two people?
What does, what does, what does the transition from dean to SRO look like? What does, you know, do the SROs just show up at the high school? Obviously, it's, I mean, I'm assuming that you-
That would be a conversation we would have to have with the city about the transition. But as far as a dean, we would, as any employee, it's not a month-by-month basis. It would be for the end of the school year, correct, Stacy? Yeah.
So then, but then, right, and I guess, I'm assuming you've looked at the MOU and are assured that, you know, it's, it's, the school is under our control, therefore the SROs are not simply going to show up.
Oh, we would have notification, I assume, as I received a written notification that they weren't going to be onsite. Police Chief Tanya, I would believe, would give me a written notification, but I can actually verify that with her. We can have some discussion about that.
Yeah.
I think that's the way it's worked in other districts. When the cities have made the decision to send the SROs back, I presume they would have notified the superintendent and the principal that we're ready to come back.
Right, that there's a, there's just a conversation and a transition because up to this point, up to this point, you know, all we have is the MOU, and the MOU doesn't,
Wow, right.
Doesn't address the situation, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct. It is not. Our favorite phrase, uncharted territory.
Yes, yes, okay.
I'd say that is accurate.
And the other thing, too, is recognizing all of the duties that the SRO role addressed, and also recognizing that presumably we'll have another dean at the high school. Dr. Belmont is working with Principal Sandoval with, to, to review the roles of the adults at the high school to ensure coverage, right, and, and make sure that, you know, students are covered, halls are covered, all that good stuff.
Yes. Did you want to comment, Dr. Belmont, with your discussions?
Oh, sorry, Dr. Battle, I'm sorry.
It's a good question because, as the board's aware, and, and as articulated in the MOU, a large majority of our agreement had to do with that proactive relationship building and connections.
Yeah.
As well as classroom support. So we are, we're fortunate this year to, through our partnership with the Sine Foundation, to have three full-time Dreamline coaches. We, we maxed out at one last year because they were going through some staffing challenges and just couldn't quite meet that need. Those coaches are really highly trained to form those relationships with our, our students. They also sit on our success teams at grades nine and 10. So in addition to the, the deans and, and those Sine Foundation coaches, we're, we're seeing that relationship gap, like, decrease that our SROs provided. The, our CTE, our, our pathways teachers are working with our inclusive partners to kind of circumvent some of the things that the SROs helped provide in the classrooms. And when we do have instances where we need police consultation for students and families, our administration has protocols to contact 911. Patrols respond in fairly short order, in a non-emergency fashion, and provide that consultation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify or emphasize one of the points that I think you alluded to in your report, that when you were asked, when you said the parents were asking about why we don't have the SROs in the building. And just to be very clear, and I know this has come up in other conversations around this, we would love to have the, the school resource officers back in our buildings. The fact is, the city of Burnsville has elected not to have them in the buildings right now. So when, when and if the legislation changes, when and if the city of Burnsville changes their mind, we welcome that conversation. We want to have that conversation. We want them to be back in the buildings. But I just think that's important to say.
And I think also, when people have questions, right, it's fair, it's entirely fair for, for families to, to ask Principal Sandoval in that, in that meeting, questions about the SROs. But I think it's also fair for people to reach out to the city and to, and to the officials and the staff at the city to have those conversations.
Sure.
Because I think, I think the city has those answers in terms of their decisions around why the SR, you know, why the SROs aren't in our schools. And I think they're probably the best, the city is, is probably the, the best one to answer those questions. We can't speak on behalf of the city except to say that we, we respect their decision and, and, you know, we're waiting eagerly for the time when the SROs can come back.
And in the meantime, we have to make our own plans, which is what you're thinking about tonight.
Yes, exactly.
So, so that we have the, the security and the safety and the students and the staff at the high school in mind, and knowing that we don't have them right now, and we don't know when or if the city is going to bring them back. So we have to keep, we have to move forward in the meantime. So thank you.
With the city having more answers than we do, I don't know if it's ever been made clear from them specifically what clarification are they seeking with legislation to bring the SROs back? That's vague to me. And so, like, what, what would satisfy, I mean, I think that's what we need to ask are the city officials, is what, what is the, the response you're wanting or needing in order to bring the SROs back?
I think that gets back to what Director Alt was saying, that I don't want to speak for the city.
No, we don't want to speak for the, I mean, it's like, the public needs to ask that question.
Sure, yep.
And then the other thing, because with some other clarification from Attorney General Ellison, several districts had SROs return back to the schools. Of our neighboring districts...
Since you brought it up, I spoke with a staff member at the Minnesota School Board Association a week or so ago, and in my conversation with him, he mentioned that there are very few school, he didn't give me a number, but that there are not many school districts left in the state where the SROs have not returned at this point, or one of the few.
Yep.
And I, too, have not got a clear-
Clear answer of what they're waiting, what, what response they really want and what, what is their mindset that's keeping them from moving forward and bringing the SROs back into the school?
Well, and at this point, the new, I think the legislative session and even number years doesn't start until February.
Right.
So it'll be, by the time the session is done, I suspect the school year will be nearly done. And then, and who knows, and we don't know at this point what may change at the legislature, which again, is why we have to keep moving forward from our perspective.
Yep. Well, and our, we're starting our budget, so.
Well, exactly. We'll definitely need to know, have some clarity by budget season about what, what is going to happen for next school year. But right now, yes, here we are. Are there other comments or questions for this evening around this?
I just appreciate the plan with, with the deep, adding the dean and the partnership with the Sine Foundation and, and the work that we're doing, too. I'm set.
I agree.
Thank you, thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just curious, these deans and coaches, they have, they're trained in not just de-escalating fights, but do things that the SROs would do to break up a fight and those type of things?
So I'll, I'll tell you about the Sine Foundation. Their foundation is mentoring and forming relationships, but also that safety care training three. I don't know if Dr. Belmont wants to give a little bit more. In our system, we've had staff members trained, but with the not having the onsite SRO, we actually expanded it to our associate principals, principals, and some other people. And that's really, that is intensive intervention. Dr. Belmont, did you want to add a little bit more about that? So the Sine Foundation coaches are really mentors. As you know, the more relationships you have, it just takes one caring adult to really a kid can go to. And so really shoring up more people.
So more about prevention.
More about prevention. Whereas the safety care training is, unfortunately, there are students who solve conflict physically, and so we needed to have more staff.
Right.
That can intervene in that way. Dr. Belmont?
Thank you, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. That, that was well stated. The Safety Care III is a very small part of the overall pie of our training. Safety Care is not new to our, our system. However, adding that Safety Care III, Director Pietrowski and her team of behavior analysts, kind of, they, they head up that training. And it's just what Dr. Battle mentioned, that if you do have to intervene, it really focuses on proactive and then verbal response, and then body positioning, and then if, if need be, guiding students away from the situation.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for this evening? If not, it is 8:47, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Yep, Bethany Milligan.